Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Dover School Committee for Thursday, March 4th, 2021. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Information on how to join the remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas is posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Firstly, on our agenda, I would like to welcome Elizabeth Grossman to the Dover School Committee. Elizabeth was recently appointed to fill the unexpired term of Brooke Mataris. Liz, I don't, there she is. Liz, I just want to say thank you for stepping up and taking this on. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's a total honor to be a part of the group, and I'm really excited to do the work. So, thank you.
Great, we look forward to working with you. Next on the agenda is the reorganization of the Dover School Committee. Dr. Keough, should I hand this over to you?
Yes, and as the temporary acting chair, I'm going to ask everybody to please mute. It's so important because the noise has become a huge distraction, so thank you for that. So, with the resignation of Brooke Mataris, I first of all, I want to say what a wonderful person and what a wonderful chair she was. We are going to miss her, and we greatly appreciate her service. She was truly one of a kind and just an awesome contributor to our schools, and we were thankful to have her as long as we did. With that, we do need a new chair, and so I'd like to call for a motion to name the next chair, the interim chair, really, until you have your official reorg after the next election. So, this would be for a couple of months. Sarah?
I'd like to move to nominate Leslie Leon as our interim chair.
Very good, is there a second?
Mark Healy, and I would second that.
Thank you, Mark Healy's seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will poll the members, and I'd ask you to unmute yourselves. Mark Healy?
Yes, Mark Healy, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez, done?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
And Leslie Leon?
Leslie Leon, yes.
Great, well, congratulations, you're the new chair. So glad, Leslie, and thank you for being willing to step up. Really, really happy about that.
Thank you, I have big shoes to fill. I loved working with Brooke, she was wonderful. She's been here for a long period of time, and she is dearly missed.
Yeah, agreed. So, the floor is yours.
Okay, due to my interim position as chair, I was the Dover School Committee Secretary, so we will need to go ahead and nominate a secretary. Do I have a nomination for the Dover School Committee Secretary?
Sure, Mark Healy, I'd like to nominate Sarah Gutierrez, done.
Great, do I have a second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Great, could everyone, I think you're all off mute. Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez, done?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Leslie Leon, yes. Thank you, Sarah, for stepping into that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, next on the agenda are the community comments. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate, and we will not be answering any questions this evening. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. Do we have any community comments this evening? Sarah, if you wouldn't mind helping me just look around?
We have two hands raised, Leslie, Christine Atkinson and Leslie Campbell.
Okay, Christine Atkinson, could you take yourself off mute?
Absolutely. Good evening, my name is Christine Atkinson, I teach 4th grade here at Chicaring. I have prepared a brief statement on behalf of myself and many of my colleagues. I love my students, I love teaching, and never in my wildest dreams did I ever think I'd have to navigate and help my students push through some of the challenges that we have faced this year. But we have done it, and I am proud of the work that we've done and the accomplishments that my students and I, as well as my colleagues, have made. Over the past year, we have asked a lot of our students, we've asked a lot of ourselves, working remote has not been easy, it requires a lot of preparation and planning on our end, it requires an entirely new set of skills from our students, and it requires our parents to be part of their child's education in a way that they have never had to do before. It has been hard. That being said, being in school during a pandemic where many of us have experienced losses and made sacrifices on a personal level, that has been equally hard, and at times even traumatizing. I come to school every day worried about my students, myself, and my family. Each morning, I check the desk to make sure they're five and a half feet by three feet apart, because I know that throughout the day, they're going to shift. I am vigilant in reminding my students that their masks need to cover their noses in order to be effective. Hand washing and hand sanitizing has officially become a subject on my schedule, and as a class, we've looked at the difference between six feet and six inches, and I try to use a bit of humor each day when reminding students that there's a big difference and that they need to spread out. And many days, all of this happens before we start morning meeting at 8:15. But we do it, and we make it work because our students matter. With Parent Teacher Conference this week, I'm reminded of the conversations I have with most parents around this time about class placement. Parents tell me that their child really needs to have a teacher who's structured, and that they do best when they know the expectations and can follow routine that is consistent and clear, and I couldn't agree with them more. Changes this year have been ongoing, and every time my students finally feel like they have control over their learning, they're asked to change again. I know that most of us want the good old days back. We want our kids in five days a week, learning and socializing like it used to be before COVID, but that is not the world we're currently living in, and pushing our kids back in on Wednesdays is not going to make it like it used to be. For every change we make, there is a cost that my students are paying. Wearing a mask for six hours each day during PE class, during recess, during their math test is taking a toll on many of them. Sitting in their seats facing one direction for a long extended period of time is taking a toll on some of them. Going to school earlier this year is taking a toll on some of them. Remote Wednesdays give my students a chance to work, think, and learn in a comfortable environment. It allows them to take movement breaks when they need to, and to do it without a mask. It gives them the opportunity to practice working independently, to explore what it means to have time management skills, to learn how to follow a schedule. And at the same time, it offers them the flexibility to listen to themselves and adjust based on their learning style and their overall needs. I know there are benefits to having our students back in school for those five Wednesdays, but I also know that with this change, there will come a cost, and that cost, and sorry, a cost that some of our kids will have to pay, and I'm just not sure that it's really worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I think Leslie Campbell, did you have your hand up? Could you take yourself off mute?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Leslie Campbell, and I work across the school, helping students with social and emotional needs. First and foremost, I want to thank our school committee and administration for all of their hard work during the pandemic. As we all know, it has not been easy. Let's face it, this pandemic has taken such a toll on every one of us in many different ways, but we all continue to work tirelessly, day in and day out, to do what is best for our students. They are always at the forefront of our decision-making. There are no words to describe to you how fortunate we have been to be able to have all of our students back in for four days since the beginning of December. This was not an easy task, but because we came together as a community, we have been able to be successful. To see the joy and happiness on the students' faces has been something I know I will never forget when I look back on these challenging times. However, these students have had to navigate many changes, such as wearing masks all day, not having social snacks, having an assigned lunch seat with only one other person, and also assign bus seats to and from school. As we know, change can be very difficult for students, and oftentimes prevents them from getting into a routine. Not only have they navigated changes within the school day, but they have had to shift from fully remote in the spring to hybrid two-day-in model to our now four-day-in model. Given that we have been in four-day-in school model for just over three months now, has been a blessing. As I walk into many classrooms, I can see the routines happening and the students engaged in learning. They are finally adjusting to the last change of four days in. My concern for pushing in for the remaining five Wednesdays is having the students adapt to yet another change. For every change we make, there are costs that will affect them. I truly believe that we will struggle more, that the students will struggle more socially and emotionally if we push them in on these Wednesdays. I believe the students are learning valuable life skills on virtual Wednesdays. They are learning to self-monitor, take movement breaks as needed, work independently, and develop time management skills. Watching the students manage all of this has been nothing short of amazing. I want you to know that we have been and will continue doing the absolute best we can to provide your children with a meaningful education. Many teachers and administrators are working far beyond a typical workday. Please know that no matter what, we will continue to tackle this COVID-19 challenge together, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Leslie. Rochelle Nasrallah?
Hi, my name is Rochelle, I'm a parent of a child at Chicaring. I cannot thank the student, the teachers, and the staff, and all support staff at Chicaring enough for the incredible work you all have done this year. I know that our elementary school and our district have gone above and beyond what many of our peers have done, and I think our children are more emotionally stable as a result of that. I am extremely grateful, and I respect the views of the teachers that just spoke. I do want to say from the perspective of a parent, that the Wednesday at home is difficult for my son and maybe for others. It is one day that's different than the other four. There is a lot more independent time. He needs to follow a different schedule, it's different than the other four days of the week, and it is not the same amount of contact with the wonderful educators that we have at Chicaring. So, I just want to express that I think there is a lot of benefit to being in five days if it's feasible and logistically safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Do we have any further community comments? I don't see anyone, do you? Sarah, do you see anyone? Okay?
I don't see any hands raised, Leslie.
Okay, great, thanks. Hearing no other community comments, we'll move on.
There's a hand.
I'm sorry, who is it?
Jackie, Jackie Hines.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Jackie, I apologize.
That's okay, no problem. I just also wanted to state, I think, a lot of what Ms. Atkinson said. I don't know if you can see me, I'm, first of all, you know, a big thank you to the school, I think, for being extremely flexible and, you know, working. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to thank the educators, I think, you know, the team, the school, and everybody has done a remarkable job. I'm really grateful that we're in four days a week. I do want to echo some of the thoughts that Ms. Atkinson mentioned, that, you know, we're really lucky to have had the kids in four days a week. I think the start time is really hard for them to be able to get up so early and have that be continued throughout the week. I think having alternate days will not provide a consistent routine, and I think if any of us tried to sit with a mask for six or seven hours and not move in our rooms, we need to have, they need to have a little bit of a break, and I understand, you know, having younger kids is really tough, right? It's hard, it's hard for them to focus on the remote stays at times, but I think that, you know, to the point that Ms. Atkinson made about cost, and the cost, is it really worth it if we're not, you know, if we're not taking that time to be mindful of the risk that we're putting our educators in, as well as the risk we're putting our children in, particularly as we're seeing counts going up? And, and we're so close to having vaccines, it just doesn't seem like it's worth it at this point in time. So, thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Jackie. I just want to ask one more time if there's anyone else who had a community comment before I move on.
We have a, we have another hand raised, Bradley Pastor.
Okay, Bradley, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So, I really appreciate everyone's comments and feedback and input, and I'd like the, and appreciate the thoughtfulness and opportunity that everyone's looking at, the potential to go back to school more. So, yeah, from my perspective as a parent, as a lot of us are, is that my son has grown and developed by being in school, that the time when he's not in school is, quite frankly, it's a wasted time, it's a wasted opportunity, and that's in addition to us paying for tutoring and for him to be in a pod. He does better in school, enjoys the socialization of the school. The things that us as adults have mentioned that are issues, he is not raised in terms of whether it's difficult or it's more challenging, he likes being in school, likes being with his friends, and, you know, throughout the entire conversation, whether kids should go back or should not go back to school, I feel the goalposts keep moving. So, if we are to follow the science, the science says the kid should be in school full-time. That's both the health impact, but from a physical and a mental perspective, I believe that we as a community and as a school administration has done an excellent job in terms of going and managing and mitigating those things. And the idea that we are going to further negatively impact our children, it doesn't sit well with me as a resident of the town, and, you know, I am in complete support of our kids going back in school five days a week, and I support the efforts of our superintendent in the administration, and I believe that they can execute a plan effectively based upon the guidance they're receiving from the town and from the state, and that we as members of the community, and I'm not on the school board, but as, by extension, the school board, that we shouldn't micromanage the administration, and we should allow them to execute a plan that really, I feel, reflects the best interests of the child and the children, and I understand that everyone has a different perspective on what represents the best interest of the child, but certainly, you know, as if I can be one person on this voice tonight, they need to be back in school, they need to be back in school full-time, and we need to do that now. And I remember one of the first conversations, I think it was a school committee meeting last year, when the question was raised for our superintendent into the town, what does the science say of when the kids should go back in school? And the answer, both from the town and from the superintendent, was now, they should be back in school full-time. When we asked, I believe it was the gentleman who's on the Board of Health, said, he indicated that he would feel very comfortable getting his kids back in school. So, if we continue moving the goalposts on what's important, and what are we going to do, the kids will never be back in school, and then we'll be having a conversation about mental health, and what we should be doing in terms of outreach, and how we can help kids with all the social issues and anxieties that we as adults have put upon them on top of a very difficult time. So, thank you for the opportunity to say my words, and I appreciate everyone's support, and, you know, obviously, I have a different point of view, but in the end, I respect whatever decision, you know, ultimately is put forth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bradley. Vallyn?
Hi, I'm Vallyn, I have a 4th grader and a kindergartner, and I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of the teachers and the administration and the staff who have been making this year as successful as it has been. I know it certainly has not been easy to balance getting the kids back in school and your own family responsibilities at home, that's a huge balance, so I certainly appreciate that. Speaking from my own perspective as a parent, I would like to second what Mr. Pastor just said, that my kids are really happy in school. They come home with so much energy, and they're so happy and cheerful. I think more time for them would be a great thing, and especially for my kindergartner who still struggles a little bit with doing the online learning. We don't have a really great Wi-Fi network in my house, so she gets kicked off at times, and I feel like that causes her more anxiety than anything, because she feels like she's missing out, and she's not, she, she feels like she's not doing what she's supposed to be doing because she's getting kicked off. So, and so I have a lot of sympathy for her, so I think, especially the younger ones, if we can get them in there five days a week, I think for their education would be really ideal. But as a whole, I think the entire elementary school, it would be a great thing for my 4th grader as well, so for all grades. So, thank you for considering that.
Thank you so much, Val. Do we have any more community comments? Okay, hearing no other community comments, we'll move on to the next agenda item, but briefly, before we move on to the public hearing, I'd like to turn over to Ms. Vittori to update us on a few budget adjustments.
Yes, thank you, Leslie. So, we presented your budget back in December, and we've only, to date, only have two changes to make that I do want to just discuss with you tonight before we go into the budget hearing. So, the two is, if you remember, in December, you actually voted upon a recommendation by our advisory council on extra compensatory duties to increase the stipend positions for the PLC leaders at Chicaring. So, that vote, that positive vote increased your budget by $7,557, so that is in addition to the budget as presented in December. The second adjustment deals with a retirement notification, so we do have an educator retiring at Chicaring who's notified us, and we're taking a reduction in your teaching salaries of $50,000. And just to sort of put that in perspective, a entry-level teacher on our matrix comes in like in the mid-50s, and a long-tenured teacher on our matrix is more in the $100,000-plus. So, that's how you sort of calculate what the savings is, so that's how, why it's $50,000. So, with those two adjustments, we're actually decreasing the budget we presented in December to you by $42,443. That just puts us over from black to red. So, we're asking the town for about $3,000 less in fiscal year '22 than our budget was in fiscal year '21, so that should be well-received by our warrant committee and also the townspeople. So, we're bringing forward the budget of $10,369,665, which is a 0.03% decrease. Any questions on those two adjustments?
Colleen?
Hi, actually, it's not on that adjustment, is it okay if I still ask?
Sure.
I'm asking how the district is approaching transportation costs. I see it's the same, we're assuming the same. Has there been any thought about how transportation model may be different?
So, it's not, it's sort of the same, but not the same. You had enough reserves that I put extra money towards your transportation last year, if you remember, so you're sort of masking a little bit the increase that's really there. So, we're planning on, I'm actually, when I'll, we'll talk a little bit about this in the budget presentation, but basically, we're looking at a normal operations next year. That's how we built the budget. If anything deviates from that, when we talk in our, in the financial report, monthly report, I'm going to bring that to your attention, some grants and funding we've received that are available for us for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, so that's where we could potentially draw upon if we have to change transportation. I will say to add buses is actually difficult. I don't know if they'll continue next year, but one of the issues is not necessarily having a vehicle, but having drivers. So, Conley has really been piecing that together this year, you know, because there are some drivers who, I mean, most of our drivers are a little on the older side, and so there is concerns about working, right, during COVID. We've been really lucky to keep our staff intact, but other districts, I mean, they're just, they're moving people around, so that would be the issue with trying to add buses to our fleet. So, my guess is our costs would probably be the same, and with the restrictions and the transportation that have already taken effect this year, I feel like we should be fine next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. I would now like to open the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year '22 budget. Dawn, I'll hand it over to you again.
I'm going to screen share. Okay, so we're here tonight to present your fiscal year '22 budget. So, just to remind your committee members, but also the new people joining us tonight, our assumptions in building this budget. So, as I mentioned, we're looking at a regular school operation, which is in-person, five days a week, with level enrollment. Where we built this budget in compliance with the town's budget guidance, which for the town of Dover is level-funded, so basically, they want us to provide all the services we're doing now, and whatever that cost, that's our budget guidance, although they will put the caveat in if there's places that we can reduce the budget to do that, but that is the guidance that we've used. We continue to align our budget with the district strategic plan. We do that in all the buckets that are in our plan, so that, you know, we're moving that forward with any investments that we need financially. And as we just mentioned, we are, we built it too with the acute awareness that, you know, there is still potential post-COVID-19 state budget financial constraints. The good thing for Dover is that we're less reliant on state aid than some of the other other districts, and the majority of our budget is funded by taxpayer dollars, and so that would be the issue that we could potentially have, but we're sort of, we're sort of protected by what happens at the state level, which is helpful for us. So, we'll look at your budget in two different buckets, if you recall, in district and out of district. So, the budget drivers for your in-district, which is all the operations at Chicaring, obviously payroll is 85% of that budget, and that's what's driving any cost changes that you have. The majority of our employees are in bargaining agreements, and with that, the contractual increases for next year are approximately 2%. As we mentioned, the educators are on a matrix, so their ranges of increases could be from 4% to 13%, and so that's factored in as we build the budget. We've had several staffing changes and retirements, I just notified you of one retirement that's actually helping offset salary increases. The budget that we've built, probably, it has about $100,000 of that category of staffing changes and retirements that's helping offset the increases on the staff that are remaining. And again, we build our special education staffing based on our projected student cohort. So, if you recall from our December presentation, we have reduced the educational assistance staff in special education by one based on the student cohort that's projected for next year. Obviously, how many classroom sections we have is a big budget driver, and that's based on your student enrollment. All the projections that we've reviewed keeps us level with 24 classroom sections. That basically turns out to be one grade level at three sections, three grade levels at four sections, and one at five. What we've been seeing for the past year or two, and I expect it to continue next year, is that will probably shift the number of sections by grade depending on the enrollment in each of those grades. And again, if you remember looking at your detailed budget, we're continuing to do trend budgeting, so wherever we see that we have not been expanding budget account number in any given, over, for a consistent number of years, we will continue to reduce that. So, on the other side is out-of-district. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, the regional agreement for Dover Sherburne places the financial responsibility for any Dover resident from the age of three to 22 that's placed out for educational services in this budget. So, you're not only carrying the in-district for Chicaring, but also the cost of educating any student placed out of district who's aged three to 22. So, we're projecting placements in fiscal year '22 of 26 students being placed out of district. That's a decrease from 31 that we had in fiscal year '21. If you recall from the financial statements on a monthly basis that we've been providing, we're actually over budget right now in our fiscal year '21 out-of-district placements. However, you're not seeing that impact in your fiscal year '22 budget because we're having students graduate and placed out, or in age-out, which is helping absorb those overages that we had this year. Another big piece of your out-of-district is transportation, and as you may recall, we participate with the Except Collaborative, and their assessment model is what drives our transportation cost. Your number that is in your budget for fiscal year '22 is actually our same number for fiscal year '21. There's been a lot of changes. There's been a lot of changes, both except and how transportation costs are going to be sort of handled going forward. So they're still working on that model. So to be conservative, we're keeping the amount that we had in fiscal year '21. I don't expect it to be more than fiscal year '21. If anything, it's going to be less, so we should be safe with that number that we're holding. As latest today, I was request, they requested more information from us because they are continuing to build the model. I was hoping I'd have something for you, but I think this is a good plan just to keep where we were in fiscal year '21. So what does that mean when we look at your budget in total? Overall, as I mentioned, you have a budget, oops, I forgot to change that, a budget decrease of $3,000. It's a $73,000 increase in your in district and a $76,000 decrease in your out of district. If you want to look to see how that compares with fiscal year '21, we had a decrease of $243,000 last year, but that was mainly driven by your out of district cost that had a several students aging out and place, and graduating that drove that down. So as you see, we still have a continued reduction in out of district expenses. It's not as great as it could be because we had some new placements come in in fiscal year '21 that are then absorbed in fiscal year '22. So looking at sort of the five years and how we looked by category, you do see that your salaries are, you know, 86% of your total in district budget, and the increase of 1.1%, is basically lower than where we would be if we did not have all the offsets and the budget changes for staffing changes and the retirements. Typically, we see more like a 3% increase in salaries if we did not have any of those other factors. The other educational expenditures, why you see a decrease in that, the main driver in that is technology decrease, that technology request. Because of all the technology that we had to purchase in the fall to get us up and running, we are now sort of not having to put our normal replacement cycles in each of the years. So typically, we would do a three-year replacement cycle for, say, your iPads, the Chromebooks, and the teachers' laptops, because we purchased everything we needed in, in August and September. For the next couple of years, you'll see we won't have those expenses for those replacement costs. So that's the benefit of the budget impact this year. Regular education, transportation, you know, that is the normal contact, contract cost, 6%. And buildings and grounds, we are, maintain our building well, and the budget that we have now covers us for that. If you look at out of district, you can see the tuition and transportation budgets. The $450,000 is the placeholder for fiscal year '22, and then as you can see, your tuition cost went down slightly by $75,000. One thing to point out for new members is if you look at your expended columns, you'll notice it seems like we have a huge increase in our budget compared to actual. And that is because, see the little asterisks, that the budget years include 100% of out of district cost, not looking, not taking into account any circuit breaker. But your fiscal year '18, '19, and '20 are net of the, the circuit breaker reimbursement, but that the town gets back for costs that exceed a threshold for out of district placements. And so when fiscal year '21, we're expecting to get approximately $1 million. So basically, your fiscal year '21 budget, if we had incorporated that known reimbursement, would be closer to $9,372. So that's why it looks like we have almost $1 million more in budget than we actually expend is because of how we budget for circuit breaker. Just picking up on your other budgetary item is your fiscal year '22 capital. So we have two projects slated for fiscal year '22. We're replacing the flooring in all the classroom hallways downstairs and upstairs. That project cost is $85,000. That will then be done in conjunction with the lobbies that you already had approved last year. But we, due to the pandemic, we weren't able to complete that work. So it's going to be a busy summer, but our plan is for all of your common areas to be completely replaced with new flooring when you arrive back in August. The second project is more of a maintenance mechanical piece of equipment by your cold water booster system. We're upgrading that to a VFD, which will be increasing your energy efficiency, but it's also at the end of its useful life, so it needs to be upgraded. The town is submitting this project for a possible green community grant funding. So it may be that the $15,500 would be completely covered by the green community, and the town would be able to save those costs. So as always, we'd like to thank the town of Dover and the community members for their continued support in educating the students of Dover. I think we've built a, a very efficient and sustainable budget and keeps the education at the highest level that we expect at Chicreen and supporting those out of district students also.
Leslie?
Sorry, I was trying to, yes, I will now open it up for public comment regarding the fiscal year '22 budget. Do I hear any public comment? I don't think I see any. Okay, do I? I'd like to open it up now for the school committee members for discussion. Do we have any comments and questions from the school committee members? Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you, Dawn, for that presentation. It's really, really helpful, especially for, for me as a new member, to have everything laid out so clearly. I just wanted to ask, and I've asked this before, and I just want to make sure that we're still in the same place. I know that with the work that we're embarking on with DSAID and the possibility of an equity audit, we've talked about, you know, there will be expenses associated with that. I think you've suggested in the past that we expect that, that some grant monies might be allocated. I just wanted to make sure that's still where we are because we don't have a separate line item baked into the budget that I've seen so that we, we are in a position to really move forward with that work.
That is correct. In fact, Ms. McCoy and I had a meeting today to further discuss funding for the equity audit. So we have some monies at the region that can cover things that we do for the district. And then there are pieces in your, in your own budget to cover special projects. The school committee actually has a small pool of money to cover any projects that you come up with. There's also professional development money that's set aside to do special things. So we feel like we have more than enough buckets that we would be able to pull to cover anything that the DSA, both the equity audit or training or events to move forward that we don't need to increase our budgets, our operating budgets to cover those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Do we have any other questions from the school committee members? Colleen, go ahead.
I have a question about the substitutes. I see that the, the expect, the projected is about 10,000 less than this year. Did we actually use substitutes more frequently? Is that, did we actually use them? I know we reserved more for them this year because of COVID. Is that, are we still doing that for next year?
So where are you seeing the substitutes down?
The salaries.
On, on the report, on your, in the budget?
Mm-hmm.
It might be FY '21, our current budget.
In the, in the detailed budget, you're saying, yeah. That might have been part of our, let me just quickly. I think that probably was part of, Colleen, our trend, our trend budgeting. Because if we look at, no, I'm sorry, our substitute salary actually stayed the same. So I don't know if I'm looking at the same place you're looking.
I think she might be looking at, well, it's down 8,000 for the year in terms of, isn't it? Or our, sorry. I take that back.
Yeah, in the, in the budget detail, in your budget packet that we presented in December, there's a $45,000 budget for substitutes that's still $45,000.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying. I'm not sure how it looks so different on this, but yeah, I can see that. If that's, if that's the same, nothing was changed because of, because of the COVID effect?
Yeah, no, nothing was changed.
Okay, okay. Did, I'm curious, did we end up using substitutes more this year?
No, we did not. We've used less actually in all three districts because, well, the region less because they're in two days, and I'm not two days, so that helps coverage. But we've been lucky to use, you know, our educational system sometimes cover. And then other teachers can cover too in their contracts and do teacher coverage. But I think we have not seen, we have not seen an increase. But we have seen an increases in our long-term substitutes for the number of maternity leaves that we've actually encountered. But not day-to-day substitutes. I think we've been fine.
Okay.
I wondered, Dawn, if that's related to the fact that our teachers have really stepped up and helped out to cover people because we have so many kids zooming and, you know, there's been so many just oddities this year that it seems to me that people have just kind of stepped in and helped out. It just wasn't a typical year. But I think, I think it's appropriate to probably go with where we were. Because if there were an increased need, Colleen, we can usually cover it. Even if they're, even if we're, you know, running a deficit, we can find ways to cover it.
Thank you.
Can I mention one other question, Leslie?
Yep.
Dawn, I just want to make sure, and I haven't talked to you about this lately, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer. But with our teachers all getting new laptops this year, and we did that across the system. And we usually are on a kind of a rotating staggered replacement cycle. Is that going to throw a wrench in our replacement cycle? So three years from now, are we going to have to suddenly replace all of those laptops all at the same time, or, or didn't we stagger?
No, we've, for, we've, we've had this discussion with Anthony Rataco, our director of technology, and we probably will get ourselves, some of these laptops can last. We'll probably start the replacement cycle a little bit earlier, like right at three years, but some will go to four years. And so I think we can maneuver with that. And we've, we've got an overabundance right now of iPads because we've got more than we need because every student, you know, K3, I believe, have iPads. So some of those will, will pull back. And so I don't think that we'll be in a situation where one year, we're just going to have a ton of replacements.
I knew you'd be on it. And by the way, while I have this chance, of course, I want to thank Dawn. I want to thank Deb and Beth and Kate McCarthy, all the people who contribute to this budget. Because the fact that we've had two years in a row now without coming to the town for money I think is a big deal on a budget of this size. So, and that's, I think that's a credit to all of us. We've, we try not to waste the taxpayers' dollars. We try to do the job appropriately with, with what we have. And we remain thoughtful, but we don't cut corners. We definitely don't cut corners. So, you know, I, I've been around long enough to see that in some systems, people will say, well, I got 250 last year, so I'm going to ask for 250 this year. Yeah, but you didn't spend all that 250. Well, I got 250 last year, so I'm going to ask for 250 this year. This is what we mean by the trend budgeting. It's really more like a zero-based budgeting that we start the year at zero. What are your needs? Instead of just taking a lazy way and just carrying forward these numbers. And, and by doing that, we've actually saved both communities a lot of money. And we've done that, I know, the last four years, and I think you were doing that with Bill as well, weren't you, Dawn?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's a credit to the system. So thank you for that, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yes, thank you, Dawn. Do we have any further comments from the school committee members? Okay, Dawn, I would also just like to second what Andrew said. Thank you for being so thorough and detailed in all of this work. Hearing no further comments, I would like to close the public hearing and return to our regular meeting. So I would like to move the proposed fiscal year '22 budget forward with the committee. Do I have a motion to propose the, to approve the proposed fiscal year '22 budget for the Dover Public Schools as presented this evening? Colleen, Bert?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Sarah Dunn?
Second.
Discussion? All members, please take yourself off mute. Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez Dunn?
Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes.
Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. Proposal approved. Thank you very much, Dawn.
Thank you. And just so the committee knows, this budget will be presented to the town's community at the open hearing on March 15th. If you're looking for something to do on Zoom on Monday, March, if you want to hear it again.
I'll be there. Okay.
The perks of being the chair, Leslie. You already know, you've already caught on, huh?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the monthly financial report presented by Ms. Vittori again.
Yeah, so what I've been doing for all three committees, and I hope this is helpful, is I've been keeping a running financial analysis report for you and then bold putting any new information so that we don't, we don't lose track of what we've already discussed and let's continue. So in your packet tonight, the new bold unfortunately is still in the out of district. So since we last met in January, we have had several changes in placement costs, some changes in program placement, so schools that students were in. So they've, they've moved to different schools, which have an impact on the class. And we've had one additional placement resulting in net negative variance of 40,000. So you'll see that your number has grown a little bit since the last time you were presenting your financials. So we're looking at a negative variance right now, not a district of about 750,000. So remember, though, that your out of district tuition and your fiscal year '22 budget is down. And that's because, again, we've seen substantial number of aging out and graduating students from fiscal year one, fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. So they've absorbed all these new placement costs. And that just gives you a little insight into the volatility that all towns experience with our out of district cost. I am happy to report, though, that we have confirmed what your circuit breaker reimbursement is going to be. So that's going to be $1,940,941, I can't even speak today, $1,94,160. So that is there to offset the overage. So the way, just to educate a little bit more, so the, because we do not consider receiving, taking into consideration receiving any circuit breaker when we build our budget, that's all additional revenues or support that we have for your budget. So although you're over 750,000, it's going to be absorbed by the million dollars in circuit breaker. So we're not having to go to the town and ask for $700,000 to cover the overage in our budget because it's absorbed by the circuit breaker. And that's just the methodology that the town of Dover has always used for circuit breaker. And they're, you know, they, every year, look to see if that's the way to do it. But in years like this, that's where it seems to make sense because we're not in a position to have to go back and ask the town for additional appropriations because we have the circuit breaker to cover us. I also updated you on our COVID-related grants. So since we met in January too, as you know, with the federal and state level, there's continuing to be appropriations for COVID-19. So there was a second round of what they're calling the ESSER grants. There was a first round of ESSER that I hadn't reported to you yet. It's only $20,000. The second round of ESSER actually is a little more substantial at $85,841. Every district who was awarded the ESSER, there was at least $10,000 earmarked for mental health. So regardless of the size of your district, everyone got $10,000 that is earmarked for mental health. Because as we all know, as you've talked earlier, the impact of COVID is long lasting as far as potential mental health issues. So they want to make sure that school districts have money to address that. Those award periods for the two ESSER is what's going to help us for fiscal year '22 and '23 because they are longer grant periods. So you can use it all in '22, or you can use it all in '23, or you can spread it. So that's going to be our safety net for anything that's still is with us for COVID-related for the next two years. So that's, that's very helpful for us. In addition, we received a, what's called a state coronavirus prevention fund grant from the state, which was $12,950, and we've already identified additional expenses that we've had to utilize those grants. So that gives you a synopsis of the, what situation with the grants and why you should feel comfortable that we should be in good situation for fiscal year '22 and maybe even '23 if there's still impact from COVID.
Great, thank you, Dawn. Does any, do any of the committee members have any questions? Go ahead, Colleen. Go ahead, Colleen.
I'm curious if that ten thousand for mental health is available for teachers as well. Are we able to use that for services for teachers?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions from the committee members? Okay, thank you so much, Dawn.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the superintendent's update. Dr. Keo?
Yes, no, thank you. First and foremost, I know that we don't respond to community comments, but I do want to acknowledge. How many teachers and parents we have in our audience tonight. And really thank them for their thoughtful statements earlier. We do really appreciate all the many perspectives on this. And we try very hard to, to listen to all the different angles. I think it's, it's the reason that Dover Sherburne has functioned as well as it has through the years. Is that we recognize that there are different ways to look at problems and issues. And we work together. And. And to that end. I, I want to make an announcement that. Related to the region, of course, the region is moving from two days to four days. On, we, when I announced on February ninth at the joint school committee meeting. What my, my vision was for our next phase of reopening, phase four. I mentioned that the middle school would return on March twenty-second. To four days, that the elementaries would return to five days on March twenty-fourth. With a rotating. Wednesday schedule. So on the twenty-fourth, it would be a full in-person Wednesday. The next Wednesday would be a half day. It would be half day remote, and then it would be the other half of the day would be in-service stage, like our traditional half day. The only difference is that the kids would be working from home in the half day in the morning. The teachers would still be doing their professional development as they always do in the afternoon. That, and then the high school would be moving their schedules. On the fifth of April, so two weeks later. There's been a lot of conversation about this across the system, a lot of conversation. This is not unique to Dover and Sherburne. This is a national discussion. I think most of us here know that. The president has come out and said he wanted all students back in school in his first hundred days. He's come forward saying vaccinations now by the end of, I think it was March. Lots, lots of discussion. What, what I used as my decision making factors were. Really was really the guidance from our health and hygiene folks, our doctors, essentially our board of health doctors. Kay Peterson, Alexi Boudreaux from Dover have been amazing. Matt Vitale and Matt Beavers, all our doctors there from Sherburne. And they're, they've been recommending all along. That we could bring our kids back safely without vaccinations. And. Yet, there's a debate that's been raging for several weeks now. Not just, again, not just in Dover and Sherburne, but across the country. It was clear at the region, and it does impact the elementary. I promise I'm going to get to how it impacts chikering. But at the region, the discussion was, well, could these, should these kids come back without vaccinations? And so we put a poll out to staff and to, to families and students at that level. And it was not surprising to me that the numbers shook out almost exactly opposite one another. With families saying they wanted the four days back in heavily. And, and they, not only four days, but five. And with staff saying not until we're fully vaccinated. So that's obviously not the funnest place to be in as the superintendent. I know I had announced my position, but I'm not a rock and I will show flexibility where necessary. But clearly, we had two camps there that were not in agreement. I understand Dover and Sherburne, I grew up here, spent my whole life here. It's important that we work together. We don't always see eye to eye. To me, it was really important to find a compromise on this particular position. Because I did not want to see our system consumed through kind of infighting. Between staff and, and families or, or anything like that. To me, the, the easiest compromise was to move the middle school up with the high school. So instead of starting them on the twenty-second of March, we would start them on the fifth of April. It gives us more time to get those vaccinations in place. It turns out I, I, I was like a fortune teller, because the next day they announced that the teachers would, the vaccinations would be starting. And so that was good news, obviously, and. But I did make the decision and was supported at the region. To, to move the middle school to the twenty, to the fifth of April. And to move, and, and therefore the high school and the middle school would be starting back four days on Monday, April fifth. I'm not going to recommend that the elementaries go to five days on the twenty-fourth. When the other two are going on the twenty-second. I think it's best for the district, quite frankly, that we move them all together into the same week. And that the middle school and high school start on the fifth. And that the elementary change that I mentioned before be moved to the seventh. So I hope that I, I made that clear. That's a lot to follow. Obviously. We want time for the vaccinations. We care about our teachers. We care about their anxiety. They have been troopers. There's no question about it. And I can't tell our teachers how many emails I've received from families who consistently, even if they disagree. With people who say, you know, we should stay with the current schedule, they consistently. Comment on how thankful that they are, that, that their kids are growing up here. And how grateful they are to the teachers who've on the ground have been getting the job done. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that I'm super proud of the teachers. I can't tell you, I actually have problems now with my superintendent colleagues, because they're constantly asking me, what are you doing over there? Every time you bring those kids back, you make us look bad. But we did do it. We did it in October. Thank you to our teachers and our elementary administrators. We brought the K threes back in October. We brought the K fives. That, I mean, the four fives back in December. So it seems only right to me, quite honestly, that we expand the reopening at the secondary level. Given that our elementary teachers have been doing it, some of them since October, some of them since September. If you think about those working with our special needs students. So I, I do think it's the right thing to do. I want to. I want to say, as far as the, the question of five days versus four, which was discussed in the community comments. This is likely going to be taken out of our hands anyhow, because the, the, the word is. That tomorrow, the commissioner will make a proposal to the, the Board of Ed. For Massachusetts, recommending that all K fives come in five days. So, and if that happens, then we have to follow that. It's a mandate. So. So I, I think much of that is going to be rendered moot, because the decision will be made for us. But ultimately, in the end, I think it's really important for us to stay unified as a system. It's not always easy. Dover and Sherburne, just like every school system, has its own personality. Dover and Sherburne have their own personalities. But, but we can do this. And so. I wanted to tell you that about. About the reopening. Before, I still have another piece on this, but before I move to that, are there any questions from the school committee on that?
I have one, Andrew, just for the community to understand. First, I want to say. I want to say thank you to the teachers that are on here and to all the teachers. You guys may not be listed as essential, but you absolutely are essential. And we are forever grateful for what you have done for our students this year. So thank you. And just for the community, Andrew, could you just clarify again at the moment what our plan is for Wednesdays until you have that mandate?
Yes. So, starting on the seventh of April, we will move to a five day schedule. So on Wednesday, April seventh, it would be a full in-school day. So that week would be five full days. The following week, and this cycle would just continue out. The following week, it would be a half day remote. So the kids would learn from home in the morning remotely. And then they would be released in the afternoon, because the teachers would be doing their in-service work. And that would just go week on, week off. It's approximately ten weeks, I believe, at that point, left in the school year. So it would be, five of them would be full day Wednesdays, the other five would be the half day remotes. That's why you heard people talking about for five Wednesdays. And I also, Leslie, I, we talked about this before, and I forgot to mention it. I want to bring people up to speed on the pool testing. So the pool testing was proposed at the joint school committee meetings. Basically, what pool testing is, is this. We take a group of individuals and they give us a sample, one of the swabs. Everyone does the swab and they put it into one container. And that container gets tested collectively with a PCR test. The PCR tests are like ninety-nine percent effective, accurate, and they're quick. We get the PCR test on all of it. If that PCR test shows a positive, that means someone in that pool. Is sick and may not know it, likely is, is non-symptomatic, asymptomatic. So then all of the members of that pool come back and take another test. And in that case, it's an antigen test, which is not as reliable as a PCR test. That's why we insist upon PCRs, but it's pretty darn good. And what they would do is go through that. And if you come up negative on the antigen test and you go about your business. Nobody has to quarantine while we're waiting for those results. So if, if that group of ten, say, had the pool test and all went into the PCR test and there was a positive. They continue on with their schedule, but they get called in pretty quickly to do an antigen test. And. If they receive a negative antigen test, they go back to life as usual. If they get a positive antigen test, then they have to stay out as if they had COVID. And it's really not nearly as disruptive as everyone thinks. And we're really trying to convince people that this is worthwhile, because the more people who do it, the, the broader the spread. Of coverage, because after all, what we're trying to do is catch people who are asymptomatic, who might be giving it to others and not even know it. That's the whole point. So the original plan was to roll that out at the secondary level, and we are starting that on Monday. But we did put something out to the elementary level, because we do want to pool test the teachers initially. And perhaps the students, the problem with the students is that for some of the kids. You know, as Matt, as Dr. Vitaly says, some kids don't mind sticking things up their noses, but some could be actually really traumatized by it. Somebody coming around with a big swab that just scares them. So we, we are not rolling out the pool testing at this stage for the younger kids, for the elementary kids. But we do want to include the staff. We feel like it's appropriate to do the pool testing with staff. So that would be in the next phase. And I honestly do not know how many weeks out from the initial rollout on Monday. We're talking, but I would say it's probably a week to two weeks, because we already know who's interested. We hope that our teachers will still sign on. I'm going to talk about this tomorrow in a screencast. If I am going to send a message out to everyone. Across the district, so they'll all get the same message about when we're coming back. And, and the pool testing, because we'd really like people to participate. I think people are worried that they're going to, their kids are going to miss school. Again, that's why I said, if we get a positive out of that pool test, it doesn't mean you have to stay out of school. Just means you got to come down and get the antigen test. And if, if you don't pass the antigen test, well, then you do have to stay out, because you've got COVID nineteen. So you've got the coronavirus. So. That's how it works.
Can I ask you how long before you get the results for the antigen test?
Fifteen minutes. So this is all a quick turnaround. The Board of Health has announced that they, they want our high-risk athletes to participate. I agree with that decision. So our football players, for example, not that it pertains to chikering, but our football players would be required to participate in this. And. Again, we, you know, it's hard to convince people. I think people worry about it. So we will double down on our information, our FAQs. Perhaps I can ask Kate McCarthy to send another message as well. We're hoping that people will sign up for it. So that's pretty much where we are on the reopening as it, and that's my update on that particular piece. But I will take other questions on that, but I still have one other thing I want to cover.
I just want to say first, thank you for clarifying that, because I myself was confused. So I think that it's going to go a long way with the parents to the clarification.
No problem. I think a lot of people are, Leslie, it's, it's kind of hard to wrap your head around it first.
Yeah. Liz Grossman, go ahead.
There are a point at which you would reconsider doing pool testing for kids at chikering. I'm only asking because my son goes to a preschool where their age is three and four, and they are pool tested every week. And it so far has been successful. So I'm just wondering, at some point, would it be reconsidered?
Absolutely, because at the end of the day, Liz, it really. None of this is effective unless we, you know, we have a way of. Feeling safe about, like, who has it and who doesn't? It's those unknowns that I think scares everyone, scares the teachers for sure. The other thing, we had a great conversation with the teachers today with the representatives from health and hygiene. And. Who was our teacher from kindergarten who spoke? She's probably on here tonight. Dawn, do you remember?
Yeah.
Yes, Melissa Baker. Melissa mentioned that. And it really resonated with all of us on there. But she spoke for everyone. You know, the teachers really want the kids and, and they want normalcy. And they're wondering what it's going to look like next year. She teaches kindergarten, you know, kids sitting on, on rugs and circles and having, you know. Playtime in the corners. And now they're sitting in rows. Something's really been lost in this process. We want to get back to as normal as possible. And. I think that pool testing might be the key to having a much more normal year next year. So it would be great if we could get the system in place and up and running. So yes, we will definitely consider expanding that list. We've already considered it. We're, we're planning to do it. It's a question of when and how.
Eric, go ahead.
I appreciate that clarification, Dr. Keo. I had actually assumed that there had been a change in course. On the plan, you know, to, to incorporate elementary students into pool testing. Because a consent form was sent to parents. So I wonder perhaps if there is, you know, a, a big enough population of parents that suggest they would consent to have their children. Participate in that, if that's something that we can consider, you know, rolling out. Because I do believe that, you know, as we look forward to additional reopening. The more layers of protection that we can have in place for our kids and for our teachers and staff, the better. Vaccination is obviously a really important piece of this. I was really pleased to see the sort of, you know, promotion of vaccination for teachers. And I hope that that can become a reality for all of our teachers in the course of the next month. But I think that this pool testing piece also offers, you know, another layer of protection, another layer of early detection. And I, I understand the concerns about elementary kids. But, but my understanding also is that this is a rather shallow swab, not, you know, the, the, the really invasive.
That is right.
That, you know, symptomatic test, for example, might have. And so I just. My personal opinion is, let's, let's add as many layers of protection as we can have.
Yes, I think it was, thank you for that, Sarah. I think it was Jill Fedor, the lead nurse, who said that it's, it's basically five rings around. I mean, I don't want to get too graphic, but five rings around. rings around it. I mean, I don't want to get too graphic, but five rings around the inside of the nostril, not deep down the kid's throat. So that actually set me at ease. So I do think that this is much more practical than we first thought. I also want to say that I, I can't speak strongly enough about the support that we've had from AFC, the urgent care folks that we've been working with throughout the year. We've had an awesome relationship with those guys. That's where we've been able to send people and get a quick, like an immediate turnaround through a PCR test because we've worked with them to secure spots for every day. So that if somebody came forward and they were symptomatic, we could say to them, just go over to AFC and get a test and we'll get an instant, you know, virtually instant result. Probably forty minutes. So that has been such an awesome thing. And our intention and hope had been to have our teachers vaccinated through AFC in a really kind of systemized way so that we could spread people out and stagger them and get them done quickly. And because we had that relationship, we felt like we, in some ways, had an advantage and were set up to go with that. Unfortunately, in the governor's rollout of the vaccination for teachers, that was actually urgent care centers were taken off the list of places that were allowed to do it, such as such a setback for us and disappointment. That said, our teachers are still getting appointments and it officially starts in March. My understanding is that CVS runs under the federal standards. And when President Biden said, I want them done by the end of March, they moved to start it. So I think people have been getting appointments through CVS. We know that getting the number of teachers that are out there in the state vaccinated quickly is not going to be easy. So my feeling is and hope is that AFC may still be able to at some point participate in the vaccination of teachers. We just don't know. Our contacts there have been awesome and I'm sure they'll let us know if it changes at all. And I still hold out hope that that's a possibility. But I did want to mention that I forgot the first piece that you said, Sarah, but I hope I covered it.
Andrew, I want to say, I want to second kind of what Sarah had said. I, I also didn't realize it was such a deep dive into my children's nose and I was hesitating with cold testing. And I think with your clarification tonight and also mentioning that's just a gentle swab inside the nose. If you could mention all of that in the screencast, I feel like your, for the elementary students would sign on.
Yeah, I, I may actually ask Jill to participate because I think she could give a quick overview. And the screencastifies are short and fast enough. I, my rule of thumb is under six minutes. If it's over six minutes, give me a call. Because Beth McCoy told me over six minutes, they stopped listening. So I try to make it quick and to the point, but it's a good way of getting a message out to people. So I don't want to forget my other announcement, but I will still respond to other questions related to this.
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kio, for that background. And I've had that little Q-tip pool test and it isn't bad. My kid
Well, you muted yourself by mistake, Mark.
Pool test is not so bad. We've done it the whole, as a family. We pulled up and did that thing. So thanks so much for the background on this school. And I think so much can change in one month. And, you know, at the end of January, we started to see trends in the state and nationally looking better. And they've looked better since. And I'd say we all feel better now than we did one month ago. And I truly hope that a month from now, we can feel as good as we expect. And we'd love to see kids back in school, five days, teachers vaccinated, schedules all set accordingly. In fact, if the commissioner gave a blanket statement to the full state of Massachusetts, that would benefit children of teachers who are in different towns currently on a green cohort. Because otherwise, they may be stuck at home alone Wednesday without their parents as their parents are working. So I would like us to look carefully at the month ahead and make sure that these moving parts are coming together. I know you mentioned that it's a setback that we no longer have as much control as we expected on vaccinating the teachers. And I think that's a critical piece of this. I would like to see at least the first round vaccination being freely available to staff members who are interested in getting it as one factor. And I know that, you know, some of the other factors, we care about our teachers. We have to also show that, you know, as much as we care about our children as well in the district as we should, we should care about their children as part of their working and being satisfied at work on their Wednesdays. Thank you.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree more, Mark. And we have, to that end, we are having, this is another piece that's important. And of course, you're on it, the MOU committee, the group of school committee members and administrators meeting with the Teachers Association to discuss our, our change in plans by agreement, by contractual agreement. We've agreed to come back to the table and have these conversations. And that is one of the things that's come up. Is there anything we can do to make it easier for teachers when, when and if they get an appointment? In other words, are we going to give them a hard time if they get an appointment at ten o'clock on a Friday morning? And the answer to that is no, we will not. We will let them go. They're getting them whenever they can. It's not as easy as being able to say, I think I'll take eight o'clock because I'm kind of a morning person. No, you take what you get in that process. I've, I've, I've seen how it works and it's, you take what you get. And they run up until I think ten o'clock at night, seven days a week. So it's, I don't know if it's ten o'clock on Sunday, but it's seven days a week. And they, you know, people, I heard someone today was going out to Greenfield to do it. So we're, we're all in on supporting our teachers in getting that. As far as the, you know, the, the daycare thing goes, I completely get it. And the, the whole rationale of giving this, this long span was to give people time to make arrangements. We, we did know at the beginning of the year that this was going to be an uncertain year for teachers and especially teachers with children. And I've been there. I was a, a, a teacher and administrator with young kids and we both worked. So I totally get it. And that's why we wanted to allow time for that.
Yes, and sorry to go on on this, but my point is that the teachers do have the right to send their children to their home districts. For the most part, on the four days a week, it seems that they are in at work. And I just want us to just be mindful and hopefully we can allow for that. If, if they're coming for five days a week, hopefully we can find a plan to accommodate for any childcare needs that are associated with that. Thanks.
Excellent point. Thank you.
Owen, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for the update on the pool testing. I'm curious about the funding. From my understanding, the initial, initially, the state was going to cover it for six weeks and then it was up to the districts to continue. And it would be up to us to then fund it. Can you just explain that situation?
Sure. Actually, they've expanded that. Dawn, can you talk about that?
Spreading the, the state coverage testing cost until April nineteenth now. So yeah, so that came out. I think they're encouraging, they're trying to encourage more districts to participate. And I think some districts have come on late and they didn't want to shut them down because they only have two or three weeks to participate. So they have extended it out to basically April break. Other than that, as far as the cost that we have to pick up, that's where the state coronavirus prevention fund that I mentioned, we have that at all three districts. So that's sort of our little nest egg for the testing, because we have hired a testing coordinator, which is our cost. The state's not covering that. And so that is, we, that's, we've sort of allocated those little bits of money at all three districts to cover pool testing right now.
Great, thank you. I, one last thing, I'd like to echo that I do agree that my children agreed to have, do the testing. And as I described it as a little Q-tip around the, the tip of their nose and, and their nostril. And they're like, okay. They've each had COVID tests, you know, they're kind of, I, I feel like a lot of kids have at this point. And when I said it was nothing like the, the ones that go really deep, they said, oh, okay, that's fine. So they were amenable. I think the, the parents who, the group who would say yes is sort of self-selecting of parents that have children who have, they've discussed it with, I would hope. But yeah, I just, I just want to echo that more data, more information is better. Because this is such a, you know, this virus is so invisible until it's too late often. So any asymptomatic information that we can gather as a community, I think is really valuable to all of us. So I hope participation is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew, I think if you want to finish up your report.
Yes, so moving on to maybe a, a, a little happier note, a little less heavy. I, I would like to announce that in collaboration with Deb Reinemann, after some, quite a bit of discussion and agreement, we would like to name Jim Karns the Permanent Assistant Principal for Chickering School. We just feel like he's done such a great job. I want to make sure I cover what I had written down, Jim, because I, I don't want to feel like I left out important stuff. But this is what I've heard and this is what I know of this man. He's a genuine, warm, approachable, thoughtful, courageous human being who's dedicated to the work. He is, he's an idealist. He, he still believes that he can change the world and be a decent role model for others. And thank God, there are people like him out there. And we're just so, so lucky to have him agree to take this on this role. And I just think Deb and Jim have, have breathed fresh new life into Chickering School. And I'm just so happy for them. And I'm, I'm proud of you, Jim. And congratulations. I know you'll do a great job. This contract will officially start in July. It will be a three year contract. He still has to be the interim for a little while, but he can call himself the Assistant Principal if he wants. I, I won't hold it against. So congratulations, Jim.
Thank you, Dr. Kio. I, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity. I would say that I'm speechless, but I'm actually not usually speechless. So take a moment. I just wanted to say thank you so much to all the teachers and the community and the students for the incredibly warm welcome that I've had to the Dover and Chickering communities. Obviously, the most tumultuous and challenging times that we can imagine. I'm just humbled to be in this position of leadership. I can honestly say from morning drop off to afternoon pickup, there's never a dull moment. But it's what takes place between those two times that is truly remarkable in the classrooms everywhere in the school. It's a kind, compassionate place. Despite all of the restrictions and the anxiety and the fears of with COVID, I just welcome the challenges that arise each day because that means I get to work with the dedicated and talented staff to help our children, to help them become better prepared for life ahead. And just in short, I just want to say thank you so much for having the faith in me to lead at Chickering. So I'm very grateful.
Well, thank you, Jim. And you know what? The, the proof is in the pudding. And I can't tell you how many people have said to me that their kids talk about you at home. Now that is the ultimate compliment. You're not just part of the, the furniture.
Well, I will admit that I did injure myself playing dodgeball the other day, so.
So anyway, congratulations. Thank you, Jim. I, if the school committee, anybody on the school committee has any questions about about this, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, uh.
I'd like to speak up and just say, welcome, Jim. I haven't formally met you. I drive by you at drop off or pickup. You always look very friendly. And my children have been lucky enough to have you in a game of dodgeball. And they came home and told me about it. And I love that you got in there with the kids. So welcome. We're very happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to second that. I just appreciate the way that you and Deb have led us through this past year. And your steady hand and your calm demeanor has been, has gone a long way. So thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's truly a pleasure to work with Deb and everybody. I appreciate that.
Likewise, I just, I wanted to echo everyone's comments and to say thank you, Jim and to Deb for your leadership this year. Somehow you've managed to infuse joy into every child's day at Chickering during unprecedented times, along with the teachers who are so very dedicated and we are so lucky to have. So thank you and very excited to see you coming on as our Assistant Principal. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's a remarkable place with incredible people.
Does this mean you'll be staying in Massachusetts and not going back to California anytime soon, Jim?
If we could do anything about the winters, that'd be great, but I think so.
That's real commitment.
Thank you. On the heels of that, we, Andrew, are you all set?
I am. Thank you.
Wonderful. We have the principal's report with Dr. Reinemann.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jim. Congratulations. So excited. You can bring the coffee tomorrow. Your turn. I'm, I submitted my principal's report, leading off with the celebration of the one hundredth day of school. Can you believe it? It's a high holiday in elementary schools when you reach the one hundredth day. And, and we've had almost all of those in school. So we are grateful. We are exhausted and, and looking forward to moving forward through the year. You've heard about the trepidation and thinking about moving to five days. So I won't reiterate thoughts there. I'm thrilled with the prospect of our adults in the building being able to be vaccinated. I think that's going to go a very long way for people feeling safer in the building as well as with the pool testing and our social distancing. So I'm hopeful for that next piece of our, of whatever the, the year like no other will be like. I would love to share with you about our bringing the conversation home. So the SAC committee, the School Advisory Committee, has been working with our teachers and thinking about the DSAID work and how do we how do we share with families what we're doing? I think that if, if there's one thing that schools could really have would be a marketing manager. Someone who could share out all the things that are going on. Certainly, each teacher shares through blooms and there's pictures there, but this whole piece of what are we doing as a school? So the bringing the conversation home is an opportunity for parents, if they would like to join us next Tuesday night on a Zoom call, hey, to talk about the theme of the month, multiculturalism. And for us to share some of the books that we're using at school for some breakout rooms for people to go and read some of these books and talk about some of the questions that kids raise about them. And then set you loose with a reading list and encourage families to use the books that we use in school, perhaps follow up. I don't know about how it goes in your house. My kids never came home and told me what was going on during the day. So maybe this way you'll hear more about what's happening. Each month, there'll be a different theme. And then we'll see how it goes. It's a, it's a total jump in with two feet. See how it goes. We may decide we need more parent talk groups. We may need less. We might have more materials online. It's going to be a total experiment in the middle of everything else this year. So we're looking forward to that. We have our March Madness Book Tournament. Ask your kids. I can't, I won't do it justice if I talk about, just ask your kids about how that's going. Back to things that are regular in the world, we will be having MCAS this year. Mr. Carnes has taken on the MCAS task and is working on the schedule for that. Some more information coming. And we are exceptionally excited to get going with professional development, looking at Teachers College and Readers Workshop. We have some staffing changes as well listed in the personnel section. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Erica, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Dr. Reinemann. I, I wondered, I have two questions. One, one's an easy one. Another one's perhaps a bit harder. So we'll take the easy one first. For, for all of us who have a very busy collection of Zoom evenings, I wondered whether you will be taping the, bringing the conversation home meetings and making those available to families because it sounds like a wonderful initiative. But I'm, I'm very aware that people's, you know, time is, is stretched thin. So just wondered if that was an option. Should people not be able to join live on the evening?
Yes, thank you for catching me on that, Sarah. I will be recording them and posting them. Thank you.
That's great. I'm looking forward to that series. And then on the, the topic of reopening, I mean, obviously, we've, there, there are strong feelings all over the map. But I was wondering if, whether you might be able to tell us a bit more about changes that you mentioned in your report that, that we would see if we are moving to a five day schedule in the, you know, the Wednesdays, the specials, the timing of mask breaks. Those were three things that you mentioned, but I get the sense that it's not as simple, moving to a greater in-person presence is not as simple as just having teachers and students report on that, that fifth day. So maybe you can share a little bit more about some of the changes that families could expect and, and some of the changes that, 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 that your team will need to address.
Sure. So I will start this and then I'm going to rapidly lob it to my partner in crime, Mr. Karns. So one of the things that needs to happen, yes, get ready. So one of the things that needs to happen So one of the things that needs to happen is we need to provide prep time each day for teachers. So right now, if you are a remote teacher, you may or may not have a prep on Wednesdays. And we especially like to have our specials for every kid, every student, every day. So we are juggling when specials are. Are we moving specials? Are we adding specials? The start of the day, the end of the day, and lunch recess are the same. But then within those days, there's special ed services that need to be rescheduled. There's IP meetings that are scheduled or may need to be shifted, consults that happen between teachers at different times during the day. So if they've been scheduled remotely, they need to be shifted because of the lunch recess times. Students may find that some of their specials shift within the day because our out-of-school lunchtime is different than our in-school lunchtime. So it's things like that. So mask breaks when we're in the building, we need to make sure we've got space for those. So they can happen in the classrooms, but they're better when they can be outside or in a bigger space. Mr. Carnes, what did I miss?
I think you covered most, but I think it's just some shifts that will be taking place. There will be added specials. Specials are such a meaningful time for students. All students will have that special on each of the Wednesdays, providing a prep time for teachers. There will be additional recess duties for teachers. I think you've covered most of it. But Wednesdays will look like most of the other days, the days that we're in. So but just a lot of, some bigger tweaks and some smaller tweaks too that we have to manage to the days.
Colleen? I think I see, yes?
Yes, hi, thanks. I'm curious about the instructional hours that will be lost on the remote half-day Wednesdays. Are they considered lost instructional hours now that there'll be half-days? I assume we're losing some hours, probably about two hours on each of those days. Is that about 10 hours?
That sounds like a great question for Ms. McCoy or Dr. K.
Yes, Beth's probably, actually, why don't you answer that question, Beth? Because I think you know enough about where we're, you know it more, better than I do. Let's put it that way.
Right. So we're actually gaining hours, believe it or not, because when students are in school for, what is it, six hours, six and a half hours? Five of those hours are counted as live instructional hours. So on those Wednesdays, we'll be getting five plus. Whereas on a remote day, if we continue with the only remote days, they're only being able to log about three hours. And then they get time in the afternoon currently for asynchronous time because we know that the kids aren't on Zoom for six hours a day when they're home on a remote Wednesdays. So if that makes sense, we're actually gaining live hours and losing asynchronous hours, which is to our benefit.
And we also know that we were already two days ahead of most people, most districts, because we only used eight days at the beginning of the year to prepare for reopening, and everyone else used 10. So we were two days ahead there in terms of hours, if you want to get technical. You know, that's 12 extra hours that we had there. And plus with the fact that our K3s were in in October and our 4.5s since December, most districts are at, two days at best. And we're really way ahead of the curve. So we'll be curious what the direction is from the commissioner. But we think either way, we're going to meet the hours, and that's usually how they measure it.
Thank you.
Could I ask you real quick, Deb? What's going to happen on Wednesdays? I know I have the pleasure of listening to George play the recorder Wednesdays, and Victor plays trumpet. So I'm just wondering what's going to happen there.
I can jump in on that. We've been working to work out all these details to make sure that any programming that we have in place will continue. Times will change a little bit. They may look a little bit differently, but those programs are essential for students, and we're prioritizing everything that is in place to maintain it so that our students don't lose anything, any of these type of programs. So.
Wonderful, thank you.
And schedules will be coming out with those once we have those in place. Just, there's a lot of moving parts right now that we're working with.
I'm going to miss that early morning session. Liz Grossman, go ahead.
I have a question on a little bit of a different subject. I was curious, I'm excited to see about the reading workshop, but I was curious about the five-year rollout.
Right. A full rollout in True Teachers College fashion is five years. So it's not simply professional development one summer, and you are full in, well-accomplished. As amazing as my teachers are, all teachers, all schools that start Teachers College, it's a full five-year commitment in terms of professional development, funding, training, in-house coaching. So Priscilla Stefan, our literacy specialist, will become our local coach and expert. So she'll be able to work with teachers directly. But it takes, it takes time to fully implement a K to five program. Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask something about that? Are teachers able to opt out? I worry that they didn't have a summer last year. And I feel like they really need some time off. I did used to teach, and that summer break was really helpful for regenerating the energy that they need to sustain throughout the school year. So I hope that they'll be given some flexibility in the summer trainings.
Absolutely. I think the line is teachers are solar-powered, and that's why they need the summer to recharge. So, yes, they are. So teachers have the option of attending the Teachers College Training this summer or not, next summer or not, and then, and training completely with Priscilla. So there's multiple options for how they might join in, which is why we're not expecting everyone full in this summer.
Along those lines, Colleen, I'm so glad you brought that up because it's one of the points I wanted to make about, about the reopening. And that is, in fact, that the closer we are to what our schedule will look like next year, the less work people are going to have to do this summer. And I really, really feel for our administrators. When Deb says she's exhausted, it's with good reason. There was no rest. There wasn't. We went straight out last summer. Everyone, any administrators on these screens worked all summer, you know? And they need the break too. So I'm hoping that this will ease, help us to ease into next year without a lot of heavy lifting this summer. Of course, we can never, no one has a crystal ball, but that's our hope.
Great, thank you.
Just quick, is that all for you, Deb? Are you all set?
I have one quick calendar piece I forgot to mention. We have Kindergarten Orientation for Parents, end of March, March 25. It's a virtual event. If you have friends and neighbors who have not heard about it, have them give us a call so we can get them hooked up. The numbers for kindergarten are looking very healthy, so we're very excited.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just really quickly, before we hop off the principal's report, I was hoping that we could have me, Tashani, speak up in regards to the vaccination effort she's putting forward to help the teachers. I mean, see you on, there you are.
Thanks, Leslie. Yeah, so we're excited that teachers can book their vaccination appointments. I've helped a lot of seniors in town through the COA Book Fair, and I know how challenging it is to find appointments. And so we have a number of volunteer, of parent volunteers who are here and ready to book any teachers who might need help. I know it requires a lot of refreshing and a lot of time at the screen, but you're with our kids. And so, so you can, you might have gotten an email today. You can email me at amy underscore to johnny at hotmail dot com for any teachers, any building staff that want our help. I'll connect you to parent volunteers, and we'll get you booked as soon as we can. I got one for a teacher who was over 65. I booked her today. So we're having some luck. I hit refresh about a thousand times, but we'll get these done.
I mean, I'm assuming that's through CVS?
No, the one I did today was for a teacher who's over 65, so I was able to book that at Gillette.
Gotcha. Well, thank you so much. I mean, the fact that the PTO is willing to do this is just another tribute to kind of the community spirit of the district, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for supporting the teachers and me, and it's going to be wonderful. And I hope it expedites your appointments, so.
Appreciate that.
And if any other parents want to help, let me know.
Does that cover superintendents?
Of course.
I'm just kidding. I'm like the captain of the ship. I have to wait till everyone else is vaccinated before I can get mine.
While we're on that, I mean, and Deb and Andrew, I just want to confirm this is anyone who works at the schools, Amy is assisting, and the parent group behind her.
Yeah. So educational assistance, office, great, thank you.
Custodian, staff. Kitchen, yeah.
Thank you.
So we just need their names. Our process is I'll connect you with a parent volunteer who will reach out to that staff person directly to get their information, so you're not sharing it with dozens of parents. You're sharing it with one person who will work to book your appointment.
Thank you so much, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, now, thank you, Deb, for your report. And now we have the warrant report with Ms. Vittori.
So you have in your packet the warrants that have been signed since your last January meeting. Again, thank Mark Healy for his continued trips to Town Hall to sign the warrants for us. And Liz, just for your information, if you ever want to see the warrants, we keep copies here, but they're also at Town Hall and they're public documents. But we just report out to, because you only have one signer, then it's our obligation then to report out to the school committee everything that's been signed, and we do it by fund. So you can see where the various spending is taking place. And we just share this with school command on a monthly basis.
Wonderful, thank you, Deb.
Me, Dawn.
Sorry.
I'll answer anything.
Correct. Next, we have the annual school committee vote and the Massachusetts School Choice Law. Dr. K, could you give the new members a brief explanation of this law?
Absolutely. So Massachusetts has a law. It's actually Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12, which requires school districts to vote annually as to whether or not they will accept school choice students. If the district accepts school choice students, that means anyone from anywhere else in Massachusetts can sign up to send their kids to your school. It can be a real problem, especially if you have space issues. Traditionally, Dover and Sherburne and Dover Sherburne Regional have not participated in this. One of the big issues is that the state will pay you $5,000, and it costs about $20,000 to educate one of our students. So it becomes a real challenge. Quite frankly, it is sadly, in my opinion, it is accessed in other parts of the state where you have systems that are so underfunded, and people are desperate to send their kids to school systems that have better funding and better programming. And those schools happen to need the dollars. Or sometimes schools have vacancies, and they dropped an enrollment, and they need to fill their seats. This has never been the case for Dover and Sherburne. So my recommendation is that you vote to not enter into the school choice program.
Do you have any questions from the school committee members? Okay, hearing no questions, do I have a motion to, for the Chickering Elementary School to not participate in the school choice program for 2021, 2022 school year?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Second?
Second, Colleen Burt.
Colleen Burt, could everyone take yourself off mute? Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah Goodtir is done.
Sarah Goodtir is done, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Motion passed. Okay. Next, we have the first read on the harassment policy. This is for all members to review. We will have the second read for approval at our Joint School Committee in April. And I would like to hand this over to Sarah as she has been the DSC member who has worked on this policy. Sarah, could you give us an update?
Sure, thank you, Leslie. Actually, really thank you to Lynn Collins because she was the person who worked on revising this policy and developing the accompanying procedures that were included in the packet. And as you'll see in reviewing those materials, you know, the information is technical, it's detailed, and it's extremely important for ensuring that we maintain type of environment that we all want our schools to have. So very grateful to Lynn for her attention to this important matter. The revised policy that you see is a comprehensive anti-harassment policy, prohibiting harassment on the basis of race, religion, national origin, gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation. It also newly incorporates hate incidents and provides a framework for administration to develop response protocols for such incidents. The procedures that accompany the policy are modeled after the bullying investigation procedures that were implemented in the district in 2019, given the overlap between bullying and harassment, and to ensure consistent treatment of the two. Happy to hear, you know, questions or concerns from committee members now, or committee members can also feel free to reach out to myself, Lynn, or Angie, the other members of the policy subcommittee, should questions or concerns arise after the meeting. But as Leslie mentioned, the goal is to have our second reading and a vote on these policies and procedures at the April 6 Joint School Committee meeting.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Okay, and next, we have the consent agenda. Here we have two items, the minutes of January 19, 2021, and the donation from DSEF. Dr. K, would you like to say anything regarding the donation?
I just simply, as always, want to thank the DSEF. They have, this is the donation of the water refilling stations, yes. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at that actual piece of paper. But they've obviously been awesome throughout, and this was something that the Sustainability Task Force has been pushing for. We, you know, in the midst of the pandemic, it seems like our recycling efforts and our kind of awareness about not being wasteful have kind of gone by the wayside. It's more like triage and a prioritization of need. But we still feel like the water bottle refilling stations are so important in terms of saving on those single-use plastic bottles. And the DSEF really stepped up and has donated across the district in this regard, and we're grateful.
Yeah, and I'll say on the flip side, as you know, we can't really use the water fountains, the old-fashioned water fountain. So it's also a benefit for current students. The one issue we have, though, unfortunately, is why you don't see yours in the school is that they're all backordered because everyone had the same idea. So we've been grabbing them as we can. We've got two at the middle school and one at the high school. And as soon as we get one for Chickering, you do have some, which is good. But we will be getting you another one to accommodate the students and having enough water during the time.
And we do want to, we want the kids to know that they can drink water during the day. We've checked this with our health and hygiene folks. Sometimes the kids say, I didn't know if I could drink out of my bottle. And the answer is yes, because, you know, obviously, you have to take your mask or lift your mask. So we want the kids to stay hydrated. That's very important.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to DSEF. Do you have any discussion or questions from the committee members? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Colleen Burt? Do you have a second? Sarah? Any discussion? Okay, could all members take yourselves off mute? Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah Goodtir is done.
Sarah Goodtir is done, yes.
Mark Healy?
Healy, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Can I ask a quick question? Does that include the minutes? Because I feel like I should abstain if it was for the minutes of the last meeting.
Dr. K?
Are those minutes of the Dover meeting? Because if they are, that makes sense.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Yep, that makes sense.
I abstained.
Okay. Okay, so we're all set with that. In the packet are the communications for the Regional School Committee and Sherburne School Committee minutes.
Did you vote for the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I didn't. Leslie Leon, yes. Thank you for catching that. Thank you, we're catching that. Our next meeting is May 17th. Please reach out to me if anyone has any topics that they would like to be placed on next meeting's agenda. And I believe that was it for this meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Colleen Burt is so moved.
Liz, go ahead and second that.
I was going to do it, Liz Grossman, second.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. Wonderful, thank you for the meeting, thank you, everyone, Dawn, Deb, Andrew.
Thank you, everyone.